Okay. We're winding down the music and like to welcome everyone to our Mesa City Council Study Session for September the 21st. I see that we have, I don't see Mr. Freeman with us, but there is a mystery guest on my pane. Is that you, Mr. Freeman? Okay, I don't think so.
Mayor, I think that's the History Museum.
Okay, oh, yeah, M H M, that makes sense. Okay, well, we'll look, see if Mr. Freeman joins us shortly. But again, we'd like to welcome everyone to our City Council Study Session for September the 21st. With the exception of Mr. Freeman, I note that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for the meeting that follows this one. So council, if you would please refer to that document. I know we went over this at the Thursday morning study session. Is there anything, council, on tonight's agenda that you would like additional information on or any questions for staff? Yes, Jeremy?
I'd like to request 6A be taken off of consent.
6A, okay. 6A is off the consent agenda. Council, any other questions or information you had need about tonight's meeting? I was kind of hoping that someone would take the zoning case 5A off the consent agenda just so we could tease Mr. Lake about some sort of pun for the zoning, him being the zoning attorney for a lake. But apparently, nobody wants to do that, so we'll just leave it on the consent agenda. Mr. Freeman, welcome to the meeting. We're just wrapping up discussing tonight's agenda. Do you have any questions or any information you'd like regarding the meeting that follows this?
No, Mayor, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The case will proceed on to the next agenda item on, for this meeting, which is item two, that's to hear an update on the programs and services provided by the Mesa Historical Museum. It's a great partnership. Some people, I think, think the Mesa Historical Museum might be a city of Mesa-owned facility or program, and it's not, but it's a great organization that we have worked very closely with and well with for many years. So look forward to getting an update from them.
Mayor, I think Cindy's here to kick off.
Hello, Mayor and council. So lovely to see all of you, even if virtually. I am here to introduce Susan Ritchie, who is the Executive Director of the Mesa Historical Museum. And because we have this up, I don't know if we'll get to see a picture in picture of her when I turn it over, but I will be running the PowerPoint and she'll be giving you a presentation. So Susan, I'm turning it over to you.
She is.
Great.
Susan, I think your microphone is muted.
There we go, how's that?
Better.
Technical difficulties with the computer, so we're good.
Susan, I think we're ready. Cindy is ready to command your PowerPoint presentation and we're ready for you to give your pitch.
Okay. Well, I guess what we're, the PowerPoint is basically showing all of you some of the upcoming exhibits and events that we are getting ready to do. We're going to have our grand reopening October 10th. So we're finally ready to open our doors. I can't see the PowerPoint, I just see you, Mayor.
I'm on the closure activities.
Oh, there we go, good, now we can see. So with our closure time, that we had a lot of downtime and we used it fairly wisely, we cleaned out two of the remaining classrooms that were being used for storage because we want to make way for two new exhibits. We realized that we really need to utilize this whole building and not just half of it, so we took, we took advantage and cleaned out the storage. We created an online collections and a virtual exhibit. So those are two separate things. One is a searchable database of our online collections, and I think there's 7,000 records on there right now. And then we also created virtual exhibits, which are like the bug corn baths, Mesa pioneers, and those will be just exhibits where somebody can log on and go look through collections that have to do with that specific topic. We revamped our collections department and we updated our database. We cleaned out the Old Town and the Myrick Storage Rooms, and they needed a lot of cleaning. We've been cleaning the objects that were in there. And then we created three new exhibits and we revamped our Mesa History Room. And we continue to hold weekly staff meetings and meet and get together and talk about storyboards and displays. It was just the four of us, so we just kept our social distance and we were able to continue working during that time. So that will be the next one. So these are just some of the pictures. You, of course, many of you probably recognize the auditorium. And so we set up our shelves in there. This is just a temporary housing area while we clean out these rooms and then everything will be put back into their storage rooms. So the next one is same thing, just you can see how we had so many shelves and so much work to do in the auditorium as well. And that is our new collections manager right there. New exhibits, our special exhibit, which we do, we do special exhibits twice a year, but because of the circumstances, we are opening this one late, so it's October, and we're going to let it run through the end of Memorial Day. And that's Women in Aviation, so we can go to the next one. And Women in Aviation is honoring contributions by women aviators who lived, worked, and flew in Arizona. We worked with Jocelyn and Jan at Wings of Flight Foundation out of Falcon Field. We had a hard time getting loaned to us because so many of these other places were closed during the pandemic. They didn't have access to the records and some of them just didn't want to ship things out, so we're really grateful to Wings of Flight, the Phoenix 99s and the Chandler Museum because they helped us out a lot, and Pima Air and Space Museum as well. So we can go to the next one. Oh, there's some, yep, there's pictures of some of, and we, looking and cleaning out our collections, we discovered things we didn't know we had. So we were able to also fill in with a lot of objects that we already had in our collection. So there's, here's some samples of what we were able to obtain. The women's flight suit, bomber jacket, and then a lot of pictures and nostalgia that will go down the hallway. We also have a small room that wasn't being used. We were going to use it for a kids' room, but again, because of the pandemic and cleaning needs, we decided to turn that into the Lee High School exhibit. And this we're excited about. We have all, we were loaned a bunch of elementary school photos from the early 1900s, so we blew them up and we put them on the wall, along with, we found some graduation diplomas and graduation invitations from 1914. So that whole room is going to be school nostalgia, and then each time we rotate that room, we're going to do a different high school. We'll also be featuring different high schools. So we have yearbooks, diplomas, and some other objects that we had in our collection. So we can go to, here you can see some of these great photographs that were donated to us. The Mesa History Room, we revamped it because we had some baseball in that room, and now that we have cleaned out our other classrooms, the baseball will have its own exhibit. So we incorporated, I wanted to put agriculture in there since that's such an important part of, of the settling of Mesa and Mesa in general, so we talk about, you know, the ranching. We also found some great yearbooks from the Mesa Ranch School. We have yearbooks from the 1920s, so we featured some of the faculty and people that participated in the ranch school. And we talk about also blacksmithing and, and things that women did also in the home. So here's some pictures. The Christman family donated that beautiful organ and we got that out of storage and we put that up. And here you can see some of the saddles and leatherwork. We also just got our first field trip. The charter school that leases from us will be bringing the third and fourth grade classes here to the museum in mid-October for our first field trip in that room. The founding families exhibit is something we're really excited and proud of. Again, I don't think we knew, I didn't because I knew, but how much we had in our collections. And we realized that we really want to honor the founding families and their families that are here today. So we're putting together an exhibit of different vignettes from their daily living. So we have a kitchen vignette and we're excited that we've built a front porch, there'll be a front porch vignette, and pictures of the founding families. We're hoping that the front porch can become interactive so we can eventually have speakers come to the museum and do stories and some oral histories. And we have, there's so many different collections, and then there's a lot of little items too that will be scattered throughout, so this was our way of honoring the founding families. And we are halfway done, we should be done, probably in the next two weeks, we'll be finished with that exhibit. And there you can see, it's still a work in progress. Our future exhibits, we are going to have a permanent play ball exhibit. I know we, obviously, we had baseball for a long time and then it went away, so we plan on opening this spring training, if all goes well, and that'll rotate. So whatever you see this year, we'll do something different the following year. Some special exhibits that are going to be upcoming that we have planned for 2021 is featuring diversity in Mesa, where we feature all the different cultures that have come together to, to bring their services to Mesa. Of course, we're going to honor Dr. Alston, the first black doctor to practice in Mesa. We have some really amazing murals painted in the auditorium that we want to find a way to reproduce to be part of that exhibit because one whole wall is devoted to exactly this topic. We're also going to be doing entertainment in Mesa and that'll follow. Grants, we received a grant from the Arizona Humanities Cares Act to create that virtual exhibit that I talked about. We also received money from the Arizona Preservation Foundation, and that was for the software to do our online digital collection. And we just found out we are being awarded a grant from the Arizona Historical Society and MATS to conduct oral history projects. Most of that money is for equipment, but we want to start doing that because we're also going to have a television set up at the front porch so we can run, we can run videos and interviews throughout the, throughout the day. Amazing, this Friday and Saturday, we're going to be holding a rummage sale. We were going to have it in March and of course, everything was postponed. We have so much stuff right now in our kitchen that it's going to take us a day just to get everything put out, but we're going to do that this weekend. We're also going to have a book fair. We have already thousands of books have been donated, and so we're going to do that the first week in December. And our cemetery tour is scheduled, it's October 24th. I talked to Anita, my chairwoman, and I believe that the mayor and vice mayor are hopefully going to be speakers at that event or be featured and share that with us. And I'm working on donor appeal letters. One of the big things, a big push that I have is to try to increase our membership. So we're going to start doing some appeal letters in late November to try to grow our membership. We just sent out renewal letters, so hopefully we can renew the members that we have had. We extended the memberships because of the pandemic, obviously. And then we're talking about a spring event. We have a fundraising committee now on our board, and so they'll be discussing that. And as I said, the online collection and virtual exhibit, they're available now. We've already had a lot of visitors and, and I kind of went through this with you before, a search tool that you can search, just put in a keyword, just like you would on, on Google, and then the virtual exhibits are already pre-planned out, so when you go on that, you'll just see things that pertain to that particular exhibit. And what I don't have on the PowerPoint last is that we, we've had, still had some volunteers. And today, thank you to Vice Mayor Freeman for recommending Robert Wilson. He started with us today and he is going to be volunteering through Desiree Industries and he'll be with us through December, and he's helping us catalog our collections. So we're very appreciative because we really could need the extra help. And like I said, our grand reopening will be October 10th. And we're going to do some different hours just for the rest of September and then, first, the rest of October, and then November, we'll go back to our normal, our normal hours.
All right, thank you very much, great presentation. We're exciting to see the museum opening up again. I mean, this is a great way to, to get out and do something. I think it's, it's still very pandemic friendly in terms of social distancing and, and I think you can take your family and your kids to the museum and really feel very safe and comfortable. So Susan, thanks for the great work you're doing. I know, I can't speak for Mr. Freeman, but I'm, I am looking forward to participating in the cemetery tour in October.
Great.
I'll give you a pitch, the Mesa Cemetery is a fascinating place. It's got a lot of amazing folks are, are interred there. The history of the, the pandemic and early, you know, 1900s of Mesa, part of that facility. So I'm looking forward to being at the Miranda grave site and talking about what a fascinating person that he was. Mr. Freeman, what are you doing at the tour? Do you know?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah, I do. I've been invited to talk about one of the Christman family members who is a direct descendant, so I'm excited, I'm thankful for Anita for inviting me to do that. And I also have another friend who is a direct descendant of Daniel W. Jones, who was one of the leaders of the Pioneer Party who founded Lee High. So the Jones and Sheriff Lamb, from what I understand, will be also, is a direct descendant of Daniel Jones. So I'll be there as well, and thank you.
Great, you bet. Well, again, council, any, any questions regarding, yes, Councilmember Duff?
First of all, I wanted to thank the Mesa Historical Museum very much for putting together some of those exciting collections of our history in Mesa, in particular, the Women in Aviation. And I had a question on slide nine about the first class of 10 female pilots trained at Williams Air Force Base. I was wondering what year that was?
Oh, Jen, you know what? I have it in my notes, but I don't have it on here, but I can email it to you. And I did the storyboard, well, I had my researcher do the storyboards, but I should know it off the top of my head.
No, that's okay. I think the Women in Aviation and it's kind of, is an untold story for sure, and I especially appreciate this, this year, as we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the women's right to vote, so.
And that's where it came from. Originally, it was overall aviation, but we narrowed it down specifically because of that, that milestone.
Great, thank you for everything.
Thank you, I'll find out what year that is.
Thank you. I know, I've talked with Senator McSally, she talks about doing her flight training at, at Williams, so.
She's on our storyboards, yes.
That's great.
It's a great story.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, I just want to commend you for an action plan because before, there wasn't really any, anything going on, I mean, to reach out to our community members, and, and I'm grateful that you're grabbing these volunteers because there are a lot of people that want to help. My question is on the, in the auditorium, when are we going to see those beautiful murals that can be opened up to the community? And maybe have a community meeting or maybe just a great barbecue there at the museum when the weather gets nicer?
You got it, we'll, we'll get on that, we're going to visit with you about that. I heard about your great barbecue, so I'm waiting for that.
Well, so are we. Any of the, my colleagues are invited, the mayor loves his ribs, so we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I've been pretty critical of the Mesa Historical Museum over the years because it didn't seem like there was really exhibits that told Mesa's story, that they were really putting out, and I got to tell you, I'm really impressed with this. I like the fact that, that you have a play ball exhibit which is coming up for spring break, that's what, or spring training, sorry. That's one of the things I've been very critical about is that we have the two spring training teams here, and we have all of this baseball paraphernalia, and we've never displayed it during spring training.
Yes.
And so, you know, so I commend you for that, but just telling the story of Mesa and, and the history of Mesa, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job with this. And so I'm, I'm no longer going to be critical of you, at least for this year.
Oh, thank you, thank you for letting me out this year.
Council, other, other questions on this agenda item?
Mayor, this is David Luna. I'm having a little bit of technical problems, but I do want to congratulate you for the wonderful job you're doing. As a former school employee, we often visited the museum to get historical information about the, about the city of Mesa, and we use them in many of our videos because I ran a television department for Mesa Schools for many years. But I'm glad that you're there, that you've readjusted and redeveloped the museum. This is something very important for our community, and this will give our kids, our children, an opportunity to get a flavor of Mesa history. So thank you for your hard work. Just the images I've seen are very impressive. I look forward going over there to the museum to see what you've done. And it's a beautiful building, and I'm glad that we're at an old school, that we can cherish an old school and, and admire the beautiful floors that they have, but also to showcase Mesa history because it's a great history. There's a lot that our community has to offer, and it's a great location. It happens to be at Lee High, right, Mark? So it's a great place for our residents to come and really enjoy our museum and to take advantage of, of our history. And so thank you for what you're doing, and I'm glad that you're including many aspects of the city of Mesa itself. Keep up the good work, and whatever we can do to assist you, we're willing to enable. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other comments on this item? All right, thank you again, Suzanne, we look forward to.
All right, thank you, we'll see you soon.
Mr. Brady, I'm sure that there might be some folks watching this meeting that are wondering about the status of, I know this is not on our agenda for today, but the other city-owned museums in, in Mesa, when do you think we're going to be hearing more about when they might be opening?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and council, I think we've, beginning of this time period, we've indicated we'd come back in October with a plan, if, if appropriate, for reopening on a limited basis. So we will be coming back, council, in the next couple of weeks with that plan for the two museums. And assuming the council's comfortable and we're in a position with the virus, we'll be looking at trying to open those doors before the end of that month.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. The next item on our agenda for this meeting, item three, is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Areddiya?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, what would you like to share with us? Mr. Luna? Go ahead, David.
I did want to recognize that Mesa Council College has been selected to join the National League of Cities, a new community of practice. On addressing the basic needs of our post-secondary students, the new COP, selected 13 cities, and we were one of the lucky few that will participate in this partnership. So I want to congratulate and thank the city of Mesa as well as Mesa Council College, particularly Amy Tretaway for her efforts. And the whole idea is to remove barriers to basic needs such as food, housing, childcare, mental health services, and transportation, or digital access to post-secondary students. So again, thank you, Amy Tretaway, as well as the city of Mesa for participating in this. Also, I attended the IFF memorial service this Saturday, it was very moving. I'm sure many of my colleagues attended that as well. It was on YouTube on this, on Saturday, so a great, a great ceremony, great event, very moving, and I know that we honored one of our former providers, so, so thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, David. We, you were breaking up just a little bit, so maybe before the next meeting, we might, we might want to have you log out and log back in just so we can try to improve the quality of your audio. So, and, and I think we heard everything you said, but just for those who might, that, you made a big announcement, you know, National League of Cities awarded the city of Mesa and a large grant to help us with post-secondary education, to get our high school kids more engaged in college. So I think, I think that message got, came across, but just in the event, there was, some of that was a little hard to understand. Thank you to you who, and, and Mr. Thompson and, and the rest of our council who's so active in NLC. I'm sure your, your leadership there didn't hurt, you know, in helping Mesa to get this very prestigious grant, so thank you for your hard work on that. Council, who, who else would like to share anything? Councilmember Duff?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge a hero passed on September 18th, and that was Supreme Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She was a hero for me and many on the issue of equality of the sexes. She has done more for women's rights in this country than any other. I didn't know the true meaning of having a hero until she passed, and I feel the loss in my soul center. As women, we need more heroes. We need someone to look for in the crowd that we can do more, achieve more. I believe if we can see it, we can be it. During my campaign, I gave out RBG descent collar pins. It was a reminder that even in dissent, in the minority, we have power. And I wanted to share a quote from Ruth Bader Ginsburg. "Whatever you choose to do, leave tracks, and that means don't do just for yourself because in the end, it's not going to be fully satisfying. I think you will want to leave the world a little better for what, for your having lived. And there's no satisfaction a person can gain from just what people call turning over a buck. It's equal to the satisfaction that you get from knowing that you have made another's life, your community, a little better for your effort." So rest in peace, RBG. And I did wear a T-shirt first, and remember, and so thank you for this moment to share that passing.
Thank you, Jen. I, I agree with your, the sentiment you expressed, a tremendous example for my daughters and grateful for all she's contributed to our great country. Council, other items to share under this item, under this agenda item? Seeing none, Mr. Brady, I assume you're going to, under the next agenda item, schedule of future meetings, we're going to talk a little bit about last Saturday's event for flu shots and COVID testing and masks. So I'm anxious to, if you don't mind, why don't you give us a report on that and, and of course, let us know when we might expect to be able to do that and anything else you'd like to share with us.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So we did have a great event this Saturday at Longfellow Elementary. It was our first of five events in the community where we provided for COVID testing and flu shots. We had a tremendous turnout by the community. We provided over 400 flu shots and over 200, nearly 200 COVID tests. We appreciate the work of all the staff, the fire department, neighborhood services, and many others that were there to support that event, so, and Mesa Public School District, so we need to mention them, and the assistance from the superintendent that allowed us to come inside the school, and then they were there with their staff and handing out cleaning supplies. So again, it was tremendous turnout and very, just kind of consistent flow of residents coming into the school to get those tests, a lot of families, a lot of younger children. So we're very pleased, it really seemed to hit the mark. This Saturday, we will be at Lincoln Elementary, and we will be there again from 9:00 to noon. And Lincoln Elementary is at 9:30 South Sorin, so we look forward to another successful event at that location also. And then as far as scheduling of meetings, we'll be having a study session. And then as far as scheduling of meetings, we'll be having a study session this Thursday, September 24th, and then that will be followed by a public safety committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say amen to what Mr. Brady said a moment ago about these events we're partnering with the schools on on Saturdays. For the next four Saturdays, we'll be doing this at different elementary schools in addition to Lincoln. This Saturday, we have Washington Elementary, Hughes Elementary, Webster Elementary on tap for future weeks. And chatting with Mr. Brady about this a moment ago, you know, I think if we continue to see a good turnout and can tell that this is really providing a valuable service, you know, there's no reason we wouldn't continue to expand this program throughout the city. So let's do all we can to help people know that this is a free opportunity for them to get, you know, not just a COVID test, but also a flu shot, masks, but also access to information about the utility assistance program, the rental assistance program. All of those resources will be available at these events. So I'm anxious for us to do everything we can to promote these events.
Hey, Mayor, can I just quickly... We always get the question, yes, you have to be a Mesa resident. You can show a utility bill or something that you have an address in Mesa. That's all you need. You don't have... And you don't have... But you don't have to necessarily live in that zip code, but you do need to be a Mesa resident. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that. All right, Council, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, and seconded by Mr. Freeman. We'll do a voice vote, so please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, and we will wait for the video to run for our next council meeting.